Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, July 19, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, we are calling an order for closed session and I will turn it over to the clerk to read out the closed session items as well as report out.
Report out from July 12th, report of the closed sessions. Item one, pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1 conference legal counsel, reexisting litigation California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance versus Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Subsustainability Plan at All Stanislaus County Superior Court Case Number CV20001720. Board action, no reportable action. Item two, public employment pursuant to government code 54957B1 title interim county administrative officer. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 conference of legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case significant exposure to litigation. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item four, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 conference of legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case significant exposure to litigation. Board action, no reportable action taken. Closed session items for today, July 19th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54957.6 conference of county designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins, Robert Bendorf, and Mary Egan regarding the following employee organizations: Service Employees International Union, Local 1021, Sheriff's Management Unit, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. I'm Representative Employees. Item two, public employment pursuant to government code section 54957B1 title interim county administrative officer. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1 conference of legal counsel regarding existing litigation GEAR at All versus Calaveras County, Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 18CV43460. Item four, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 conference of legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case significant exposure to litigation.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, and seeing none in the room, we will convene a closed session and be back later for regular agenda. Good morning and welcome back to the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July 19, 2022. At this time, could you please stand for the pledge?
Qua Julia, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will be after the regular meeting going back into closed session, so there is nothing to report out at this time. Next, we have staff announcements, and first is Lisa. I believe she's on Zoom. Into the matrix.
Lisa, are you there?
Yes, I am here. I'm sorry, I apologize, there was some activity going on behind me. I do not have any formal staff announcements, however, I do have a few items on the agenda today.
Sorry, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Good. Next is, I believe we have Chief Rich. You wanted to speak to the board this morning?
Yes.
Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'll make this somewhat short, but I felt compelled to come this morning to talk about yesterday's tragic event at Lake Comanche. For those, if you don't know, we lost a 14-year-old boy out, which is out on the point, they call it the eucalyptus area out there. Lake Comanche is very big. I was coming home from the Yosemite Fire, was on the Washburn Fire when the event happened on, my days are all mixed up right now, but Sunday night. And I'm not going to talk about Sunday night. It was very challenging. It was very emotional. The family of approximately 20 were there on the shore when the young boy slipped. He was, there's a couple shells out there, Comanche is low right now. It's a difficult terrain. They saw him slip into the water, he was probably about four feet of water, fell backwards, and that was the last they saw of him. So as you can imagine, all of us, probably have kids, the family was frantic, the father and mother were there, everybody was in the water. My firefighters showed up, they jumped in the water, and ultimately, we did the best we could to try to find him. We couldn't, it ended up going into a body recovery. So the plan was the next morning, I mean, they worked as hard as they could till night. I might get a little broken up, I apologize. I've been doing this 40 years, this one hit me hard. And so the plan was the next morning, move into a body recovery. The dive team showed up there. Chris Vilegas, who runs the dive team, was phenomenal. There was great communication. They, East Bay mud was phenomenal, they put the family up overnight in their cabins. Like I said, there's probably about 20 of them. They had a boat and a couple jet skis out there. Dick Brown, as I said in my Facebook post, that man's a gift of God. He was, he's my fire chaplain. He stood by the family, thick and thin, and basically, you know, got them some toothbrushes and some incidentals, because it was just a day trip for them. They were from San Pablo. The next day, what I want to talk about is your dive team, the sheriff team. Unbelievable, Amador County sent their boat over and the dive, the sheriffs had their two boats. They were, it was 103 degrees yesterday. I stayed the whole time. My job was basically just being there for the family, watching the dive team. I added additional engine to stand by for the dive team and the family in case somebody went down. But I got to sit there on the shore and watch your dive team. And it's yours, obviously, because, you know, you pay for the county, but their efforts, they were in the water multiple times, the divers. Brett Belshi is a friend of the family, he's one of the divers, and I asked him point blank, "What does it look like there?" Because, "I don't know, I'm on the shore." And he goes, "Rich," he goes, "the, it's basically silt. It's very shallow there, some areas are maybe eight to 10 feet, others are down to three feet." But the divers were literally holding hands because they couldn't see, and as they would take their hand to sweep, trying, because there's some mossy areas in there, you could see, and I'll talk about the camera in a minute, but they were pushing the silt and it would bring the cloud up, so it was very difficult for them. The Amador boat thought they had a hit on their sonar right away, they checked that area, you know, and over and over and couldn't turn up anything. Long story short, all day, they never gave up. Sheriff Rick showed up somewhere right around, I think, 11 or 12, but his comment to the team was, "This is a 14-year-old, someone's son and daughter, don't give up, whatever we have to do." And as the day went on, they kept moving around, Amador left, other people left, the dive team stayed, you know, and they kept working. I'll be honest, about 6:00, we were already transitioning for the next day to bring in Tuolumne, because I guess their boats have a little more technology. I watched your boat with the, I can't say the right name, it's a robotic arm that goes, have a robotic camera that goes in, it's got a tether to it, and they can work around it, if they find the body, the arm will grab the body, and then the divers can follow it to go get in there. So they kept working and working. At 6:00, my time's a little messed up, I got my fire engine out of there, they, we're getting ready for the next day because we were going to come back, and something in my gut told me, I told Chris that we were going to go ahead and pull out, it looked like that we weren't going to find the body, it looked like it, you know, we weren't, they definitely weren't diving anymore. Anyways, long story short, I didn't leave, I went around to the top, I waited and I watched, and I watched the family again, you know, on the shore, and they're all standing up, and when you think people aren't looking or paying attention, they didn't miss a beat. They watched every move. Dad stood all day at the end of the shore waiting to see if we could get him, and I'm going to say it was about 7:15, Chris made eye contact, he was on the phone, I walked down, talked to him, and as I walked down, I could hear the mom crying, she was hysterically crying. I asked Chris, "Did you find him?" He goes, "Yes, we did, we got him." So, and he was 200 yards offshore, kind of in the area where he went down, but just difficult conditions for the boats, couldn't get to that area, and even with the divers, again, understand, not being able to see one foot, you know, I can't say I've ever been in that situation. What I, what I want to say is that, you know, for me, and I'm amazed I'm not getting emotional, I'll probably cry when I walk out, but for that family to lose their 14-year-old son and for us and your team to be able to give them closure and be able to have their son back, we were able to get him on the other side of the shore, the corner, we allowed, we were able to, on the last part, I want to say, once they found him, the two divers who are normally in dive gear, boom, in the water, all they had, their shorts on, no mask, nothing, down in the water, got the bag on ASAP, got the boy up on the platform, and then we moved him to the other side of the lake and prepped him so the family would be able to see it. And it was very heart-wrenching, all of us were there, the fan, to have the body bag open with just seeing the mom and dad with their boy, basically his head, but being able to say goodbye. But whatever, whatever the dive team needs, I think they need, they're looking to buy another boat, whatever technology you can give them, as me as a father of two, and watching that all day, I never left, I just want to say to you and to the sheriff, thank you for yesterday, thank you for bringing closure, because without them, we would probably found the body maybe a week, two weeks down the road. So I know the family is very grateful, and I just wanted to say thank you, and please support them on their dive efforts, because you know, we have three lakes down there, and I don't know how many lakes we may have in a county, but it is an important exhausting program, and I'm forever grateful to them for yesterday's efforts. Thank you.
Gabba.
Thank you, Rich. Yeah, the EMS between the sheriffs, firefighters, fighting or going after crime, you know, we all have families. As a recipient of one of those visits, I just have to say that, you know, them going and having families themselves and understanding the situation and bringing, you know, that home to the family is true bravery, and I just want to thank everyone from top to bottom in that situation.
Any other comments? Thank you, Chief. Is there any other staff announcement?
There is no online staff announcement.
Thank you. With that, I'll move on to the general public comment. This is any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda, may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from making, from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the board. Is there any public comment? Is there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. And seeing none in the room, we'll move on to consent agenda. Member of consent agenda items, is there any staff or board member that wishes to pull a consent agenda item? Kathy?
Yeah, I'd like to pull number five.
Okay. Five is pulled. Are there any other consent agenda items that wish to be pulled? Seeing none, is there any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item other than number five?
Shabu?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kathy, you asked for five to be pulled?
Yes, I have copies of a revised letter. I found that there were some improvements that could be made to the letter, and so the letter was slightly changed, but not the content. So the letter's up. I believe you each have a copy, and there's a copy here for the public, if anybody's interested in the letter. And this is a support letter for the SURF project that we're working on a seven-county region. So it's a letter of support, and as I said, there were some improvements that needed to be made over the weekend, I noticed, so I pulled it so that we could make it better.
Is there any ques, Jack, do you have a question?
No.
Is there any board questions? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Not seeing any in the room, Zoom?
There's no online public comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve the amended letter in front of us, and I'll miss green on consent agenda item number five?
I'll move item number five.
Okay. Is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is our regular agenda, item number 12, and at this time, I'll turn it over to the clerk to read out.
Item 12, action item clerk of the Board of Supervisors, appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas.
Is there any, Marita, do you have a comment?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay. So there is a list of applicants, is there any questions or comments by the board members on this? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to turn, oh.
Madam Chair, we have the one Resource Conservation District, we got two names, one on the, on the list.
Yes.
And one slot, slot.
Correct. So is there any recommendation by the board? I'll turn it over to the clerk, and, oh, sorry, Ben.
No, I'm not giving a recommendation at this time, I would just like to hear what RCD came back with.
So yes, I, the RCD committee, they emailed back and they are in favor of Julia Marselli, I believe, I'm sorry, I don't have the names in front of me, both candidates, they liked both of them, but they leaned towards Ms. Julia.
Okay. Is there any public comment on that? Okay.
There's no online public comment.
Okay. I'm bringing it back to the board, is there a motion to approve Julia for the position?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the list as submitted with Resource Conservation choosing Julia Marselli for that one vacant position.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is regular agenda item number 13, clerk.
Item 13, resolution Environmental Management Agency, hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution to adopt an amended groundwater subsustainability plan and its appendices, technical memorandum one through four.
And I believe Mrs. Medina, there you are. Before we get started, I need to open the public hearing. So at this time, the public hearing is open, and I'll turn it over to you, Lisa.
Good morning, Madam Chair, respective members of the board, Assistant CIO County Counsel, Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Today, we bring before you a resolution to adopt an amended groundwater sustainability plan and technical memorandum appendices one through four. A little history, in 2014, Governor Brown signed Bills SB 1168, SB 1319, and AB 1739, resulting in the Sustainable Groundwater Management Agency and/or Sigma, which provided a framework for agencies to improve and sustain groundwater basins over the long term to reduce the need for state intervention and to protect and sustainably manage groundwater resources. Sigma prioritized actions in the most impacted groundwater basins categorized as medium or high priority. Sigma requires that all zones underlying the medium and high-density priority basins be placed under a groundwater sustainability agency and/or GSA. In 2017, Calaveras complied with Sigma by partnering with Rock Creek Water District, California, or California, excuse me, Calaveras County Water District, CCWD, our partners, and Stanislaus County to form a single four-agency GSA. The resulting agency was called the Eastside San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Agency, now called for short, Eastside GSA. The Eastside GSA was created via a memorandum of understanding, MOU, that requires each member agency's governing board to vote individually on any proposed GSA action, such as the adoption of the amended groundwater sustainability plan before you today. Sigma required GSAs to prepare and adopt groundwater sustainability plans, or GSPs, to describe how they intend to reach sustainability goals for the respective basins within the next 20 years. Eastside GSA partnered with 15 other GSAs to create the Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Authority Joint Powers Agency, now called the Authority. The GSP was adopted by each member of the GSA in 2019. Sigma requires the California Department of Water Resources, DWR, to review GSPs for completeness and compliance with Sigma. In November of 2022, DWR notified its members they were likely to deem the GSP incomplete. In January of 2022, DWR made its final determination that the Authority's GSP is incomplete and suggested corrective action would be necessary. The Authority pulled resources and members of the GSA to assist in amending the groundwater sustainability plan to meet DWR's requirements. The GSP, Groundwater Sustainability Plan, was amended to include appendices and its four technical memorandum, which include Technical Memo 1, groundwater levels, Technical Memorandum 2, drinking water and shallow wells, Technical Memo 3, water quality, and Technical Memo 4, and subsidence. Hence, the Authority recommends that all of its members to take fall action to adopt the amended groundwater sustainability plan presented to you today by July 25, 2022, so that it can gather all the required documentations and meet DWR's deadline of July 27, 2022. Once the majority of the Eastside GSA's members, including Stanislaus County, Rock Creek Water District, Calaveras County Water District, CCWD, and Calaveras County independently adopt the amended GSP, the Eastside GSA will itself have done so. As far as climate scene, there is no effect on actions on the general fund, and Calaveras County is, being one of the members of the GSA, contributes 25% of the Eastside GSA cost of the remaining part of the Authority. Last fiscal year, our cost was $17,457.25. The board could decline to vote in favor of adopting the amended GSP as proposed, this is not recommended, however, because all of the other three Eastside GSA members voted to adopt it. The Eastside GSA would be obligated to independently adopt its own revised groundwater sustainability plan addressing DW's concerns and submit it to DWR no later than July 27, 2022. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there any question by the board? Jack?
No, no, I don't have a question. You guys are the reps to this. What do you guys think? Gary, you've been deep in this mud.
I agree with basically what Lisa was speaking about, she is correct in what she was talking about. We do need to adopt this because we're, opposed to the other 15 GSAs, they're all JPAs, we're an MOU, so all four of us have to adopt this on our boards versus just the JPA board. So she is correct, and it has to be done by July 27 in order to meet the requirements. The GWA has already voted on it, we're just waiting for confirmation from the other GSAs, and most of them have adopted it, either going to be adopted today or on the 26th. But it's something that needs to be done, the adjustments were made, the GWR requested, again, it had to do with the sustainability of the groundwater level, most of it was to do with raising the bottom line level, where the crisis level would be, and then addressing how to replenish it to get back up to the top level during the course of the next 20 years and projects. There was a little bit of a thing said last Monday at the board meeting, or GWA board meeting, by Stanislaus County, because they had a project they wanted to include in this, and it wasn't included because it got there too late, but that doesn't mean it won't happen, it's just they have to do a different avenue now. But basically, we need to approve this in order to move forward.
This is the public hearing, so is there any public comment? Is there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. Lisa, do you have anything else to add?
I do not have anything else to add unless there are any additional questions from the board. Thank you.
I'm not seeing the board having any other questions, so at this time, I will, I'm intending there's no public comment. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it to a motion of the board.
Madam Chair, I will move this item as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much, board.
Next, we have agenda item number 14. At this time, I will have the clerk read out the agenda item.
Item 14, ordinance planning, conduct a public hearing, authorize a notice of exemption from SEQA, and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN 046-004-002 from general agricultural A1 to rural residential RR for Quinton and Lisa failing, authorizing summary publication, and a brief property description and map of the reclassified property.
I believe, oh, hi Gina.
Good morning.
Morning. Before we get started, this is another public hearing, so at this time, I am going to open the public hearing and turn it over to staff. Hi Gina, go ahead.
Okay, I just, keep us on track, I just have a little PowerPoint, and it looks as though the host just disabled my screen sharing. There we go. Okay, so getting this started, we have application 2022-. Okay, so getting this started, we have Application 2022-06. It is a zoning amendment for the landowners and applicants, Quinton and Lisa Failing. As previously explained, the zoning amendment is to amend the zoning of accessory parcel number 46-004-002, which is a 0.82 acre parcel. The proposal is to amend that parcel zoning from the current A1 general ag zone to rural residential RR for purposes of consistency with the contiguous parcel that the, that Quinton and Lisa Failing also own, that is just to the rear of this parcel. And the parcel is a 0.82 acre parcel located at 2182 Highway 12, which is approximately 1.4 miles east of the Berson Road and Highway 12 intersection in the community of Berson. So the general plan has designated this parcel as working lands. And working land designation is suitable for both agriculture and forestry uses. These parcels are thought to be parcels of size of 20 to 40 acres in size. Compatible zoning in the working land designation is general forest, timber production, general agriculture, agriculture preserve, residential agriculture, the proposed rural residential zone, in addition to rural home industry, recreation, as well as public service. So just a little comparison, the current A1 zoning was adopted on this parcel by sectional zoning map number two back in 1960. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with sectional zoning maps, but they go way back. And basically, it was a map that zoned an entire area of land without consideration of the parcel sizes. It was just basically a way to zone certain areas. And like I said, those were, those were old maps that were done very, very early on in the, in the county planning and zoning stage. And this one, again, was adopted back in 1960. So the A1 zone is actually intended to be a main resource production zone. It is to clarify areas for general farming and ranching practices. It is for the purpose of the A1 zone that residential uses are placed as in a position of secondary importance when compared to the commercial scale of production of food and fiber. Now, the rural residential zone is intended to provide lands for personal ranches in which residential uses, residential use is the primary use of the property, which in this particular case, the residence is the primary use of the property. The RR zone is established to permit small-scale farming primarily for personal uses and not as the primary use of the property. If you look at the difference in the minimum parcel size, the A1 zone has a minimum parcel size of 20 acres, where the rural residential zone has a minimum five. Still not completely consistent, but a lot better as a rural residential zone when you're looking at the parcel sizes compared to an A1 zone. So I've kind of color-coded the surrounding zoning in the general area. The gray color is identifying all of the parcels that are currently zoned rural residential. The orange color is representing parcels that are currently zoned A1, general agriculture. The green parcel there is representative of the agriculture preserve or parcels that are in a Williamson Act contract. We do have a small, a small section of industrial zoned parcel, that is the blue down here. And then we do have an area of commercially zoned parcel property as well. So the surrounding area is a mixed use consisting of commercial, industrial, residential, and agricultural zoned parcels alike. So the specific site improvements on this parcel include paved access or driveway directly to Highway 12. The parcel is not located in a district water or sewer area that would provide public water or sewer. So the parcel is dependent on an onsite well as well as an onsite wastewater system. Again, the parcel is developed with a single-family residence. And there are two 1,584 square foot metal buildings slash carport structures that are residential accessory structures. So you may have noted, noticed in your packet, there's a depiction, I believe it's the, this exact aerial photo that was in your packet. There's a misrepresentation of the parcel boundary. Our GIS parcel there is slightly off. So all of this development that you see is actually on the one legal parcel that we're trying to rezone. So this green line is kind of a general depiction of where the actual boundary line exists. And I'm primarily showing that to you because there was a little bit of question at the Planning Commission as to where the development lied and whether or not the accessory structures were on a parcel that was separate from the parcel that we were trying to rezone. So I just wanted to clarify that all of this development is on the parcel that we are, that is being proposed to be rezoned RR. So under biological resources, although the California Natural Diversity Database identifies special status species for protection within a five-mile radius, the parcel itself is not designated as critical habitat. And given the parcel size and its completely disturbed area with buildings, compacted gravel driveways, the parcel itself is really not suitable for any habitat of special species. So there really isn't any concern when it comes to biological resources or therefore impacts to biological resources. So the application itself was circulated to various county departments, public agencies, state agencies, as well as property owners within 300 feet. But circulation was for about 30 days. As a result, the county did not receive a single comment or concern, either in writing or verbally. Under the environmental review, this activity is covered under the common sense exemption that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. So rezoning this parcel from A1 to RR will result in less intensive permitted uses being allowed to occur. The potential for residential development will not change as both the A1 and the RR zone currently permit one single-family residence and one accessory dwelling unit per legal parcel of land. The parcel is completely disturbed with commercial landscaping structures and compacted driveway, gravel driveway surfaces. Being only a 0.82 acre parcel in size and completely developed, the parcel is not conducive to commercial-scale agriculture. The terms, in terms of evaluation of property uses, the zoning amendment from A1 to RR is actually a downzone by further restricting the use of the land to residential and small-scale personal farming activities compared to the current allowance of commercial-sized agricultural operations. So in conclusion, staff finds that the proposed rezone to rural residential is consistent with the general plan, including the general plan implementation measures requiring review of development applications and compatible with surrounding land uses and zoning. The project will not have a significant effect on the environment due to the zoning restrictions and existing site limitations. The proposed zone is consistent with the current use of the property and more beneficial as RR, as an RR lot, because the, because residential is currently the primary use of the property, which is consistent with the rural residential zone. In addition, the production of food and fiber on a commercial scale is not conducive on a parcel of this size. And finally, your appointed Planning Commission did take into consideration this zoning amendment, and they've passed along a positive recommendation to you recommending that you adopt the ordinance and approve the zoning from A1 to RR. And with that. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
The Board have any questions for Gina? No, Gina? Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over. Is there any public comment? This is the public hearing.
The Failings are here? You want to talk? You have anything to say?
No, she did an awesome job there.
Okay. Just want to make sure that you guys, yeah, opportunity if you wanted to.
If you're not in the room, is there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. Thank you Gina, oh, Ben.
You sure you want to restrict yourself more from any commercial agriculture on .86 acres?
And with that, if there's any other questions for staff or Board comments, I'll turn, I'll close the public hearing, and I will ask if there's a motion to approve this.
I will move this item as presented, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gina, it was really a good staff report. It was very good.
Thank you Gina.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Have a good day, yep. And next, we'll move on to Item Number 15. This is an informational item only, and I'll turn it over to the Clerk to read out.
Item 15, informational item, integrated waste management. Receive a presentation on integrated waste management and provide staff direction concerning the comprehensive review of the Division of Integrated Waste and the County Solid Waste System.
Jennifer, do you want to come up here to the desk?
Yes.
Is it open? Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, respective members of the Board. Jennifer Cashy, Director of Integrated Waste Management. First, thank you for slating this time to be able to come and communicate with you. I think we, we all know that it's going to be paramount to communicate often as we work through the challenges that we have in our division. And I recognize that this is a step in the right direction is being here today communicating with you. So I look forward to frequent visits and frequent communication. As we know, we have some heavy lifting to do, and I think that we can approach this, and it can be done efficiently and effectively if we approach these challenges pragmatically and revisit our commitment of having reciprocal communication and conversations. So with that, I'll jump right in. So the objectives today, what I, what I wanted to bring forward today is to, to bring attention to what I believe is going to streamline our decision-making and kind of guide how we're going to approach all of our, our discussions moving forward. So the solid waste task force, I'd like to do a brief update on that and move into an update on our comprehensive review of our County Solid Waste System, Integrators and the Integrated Waste Management Division, discuss Proposition 218, and ultimately end with some direction with regards to our review and fee study. So again, a brief update on solid waste task force. We do have three new members that have just come on board. We have William Todd. He goes by Cam. He's a member of the public from Valley Springs. We have Sherry Roush. She is a returning, she's been there before. She is a member of the public as well. We have Mary Pito from an environmental group. So that is, we are very appreciative and welcome these three new members. Our existing members, Mark Zain from Gambi Waste Industry, Caroline Chirato from City of Angels, and of course Supervisor Stopper. So right now, we do have a total of six members and one vacancy. And our last meeting was in May of 2021. And as, as I determined in the hallway prior to coming in, we are interested in getting a meeting on the calendar, which I look forward to. With that, I think it's important that we, we note that we will have some review of the bylaws. We will have some commission business to take care of prior to any additional items, per se, being discussed at our, at our meetings. So just take note on that as we move forward. And with our conversation, I, I look forward to getting our next meeting on the calendar. Moving into the comprehensive review, the purpose of this review is to develop a document which clearly identifies strengths, deficiencies, opportunities within IWM and the county's way, county's solid waste system. So this, this document is going to be critical in, and so that we are all understanding the climate of IWM the same. I think it's going to bring together and kind of challenge maybe some historical interpretations and perceptions. It provides that third-party perspective, and that is ultimately the goal here of having a comprehensive review. Additionally, it would explore and recommend other sustainable industry models comparable to Calaveras County. As we know, Calaveras is very unique in many aspects, and it's going to be critical that the value of the information that we receive is, is, it will be directly determined by how well our information and our model is stacked up against comparable models. This review will provide an assessment of operations, organization, and the financial help, help of the Division. So going into the scope of our review, and when I developed the scope, I took into consideration any kind of questions or areas that have been identified by your Board over the last year. year, and I also included items that I felt, you know, from, from being involved with the division could use a third-party review. So as I developed the scope, these are the following areas. It is very broad and in-depth, and you know, we will discuss that in the next few slides. But taking into consideration an operational review, looking at the revisions to improve efficiency, reduce cost, evaluation of recost, cost recovery on capital projects, for example, entering into the next phase, what kind of recovery do we have on that, and what does that look like? From an information technology standpoint, I think this is really critical as we move forward, looking at our calculation methodology in our waste, whether it's done by, by weight, by cubic yard, et cetera, and the connectivity and the point of sale. So that would really come down to, for lack of, you know, just for understanding the gatehouse. So when people come in, how are they being charged? How are, how can we improve consistency for our members of the public? And that also reaches out to our other annexes, and so what does that look like? So for instance, Red Hill, we have the annex where we receive yard waste. We have to have consistent calculation of our waste that we are receiving. So how can we scale that out to our different facilities as well? Additionally, the capital equipment lifecycle and the replacement plan. As we know, our capital, our equipment right now is very costly to maintain and repair. We need to identify how we're going to set up a, a replacement plan that would be advantageous for us moving forward. Looking at our staffing, we have, just from a comprehensive overview here of looking at our staffing, are we sufficient? Can we modify our capabilities to better serve our operations? Our fee structures for our cost-neutral operations, that goes into our parcel fee, gate fee, tipping fee, et cetera. And then our operational costs segregated by our different areas. So our landfill operations, transfer stations, annexes as well, household hazardous waste, green waste, and recycling and diversion. So before we move on to the next, again, these are areas that I have identified and I know have been questions brought forward by your board on areas that are items of interest. Again, these, this is quite broad, if you will. It's, it's very in-depth. A review of this, this nature would be quite in-depth. But with that said, I think that I would like to invite Sarah, and at this time, to discuss our Prop 218 requirements.
Thanks, Jennifer. Yes, so the, the board previously asked me to look into our, our current parcel fee and what it would take to potentially increase that, if that's something that the board is interested in doing going forward. As indicated on the slide, our current parcel fee has been in place for roughly 30 years. It has not increased during that time period. It is $150 per improved residential parcel. That's what it was when it was established in 1991. That's what it is today. The parcel fee is authorized by government code. It may be used for operation and maintenance of county waste disposal sites, and that's something that the board pursuant to that government code section, the board has to approve it annually every year before July 1st, which is why you just recently did so last month. With respect to a potential increase, or if the board were inclined to revisit the fee or look to update it, it is a property-related fee governed by Prop 218. So there are both, there are fairly substantial, both substantive and procedural requirements that go into changing a fee of this type. On the, on the substantive side, the revenue can only be used for the purpose for which it's imposed. It cannot exceed the costs of providing the service. Now, that does include both direct and indirect costs. And then each partial, each parcel can only be assessed a fee that can be attributable to the proportional cost of the service for that parcel. And so the way that, that a jurisdiction would normally have to do this is to conduct or commission a nexus study to determine the costs and then determine the proportional costs attributable to each parcel that will be charged. And then, you know, for a property-related fee such as this pursuant to Prop 218, it has to be a service that is not available to the public at large in substantially the same manner. And so the, the best example I can give of that is, you know, when you look at lot, police, or fire, those are things that, you know, every member of the public has the right to call 911 and receive services regardless of if they're paying, you know, some sort of property-related fee or charge for that. This, on the other hand, you know, you pay a county, someone who owns property in the county pays the parcel fee and then gets to use the landfill. So those are sort of the, the content-based requirements. With respect to the procedural requirements, which I think are on the next slide, thank you, Jennifer. The, so there is a process for how the fee would have to be raised. We have to identify all the parcels that will be charged based on what I just described, based on a nexus study, calculate the actual amount of the fee, provide written notice by mail to the owner of each parcel. We wait a period of time, we conduct a public hearing. Folks have the opportunity to submit protests during that 45-day period and/or at the public hearing. And if we receive protests from a majority of owners, we can't raise the fee. Now, there's an additional piece that's needed for most property-related fees, which is that in addition to all of what I just described, we also need voter approval. However, because this is a refuse collection service fee, it's exempt from that piece. So we do not need a vote, but we do need to provide that notice, that public hearing opportunity, and, and consider all protests. And I'm happy to at least attempt to answer any questions that the board has on that front, either now or at the conclusion.
I, I think that pretty much covers our questions from the past on how, how or if we proceed, for the most part.
And of course, what I, what I can't speak to at the moment is, you know, what, what a nexus study would turn up in terms of, just based on the fact that that fee has remained unchanged for roughly 30 years, a good guess would be that a nexus study would show that we could in fact increase it, but I don't know that, of course, because we haven't done that yet.
Any questions before I move on?
Yeah, I do. Counsel, when it says cannot be available to the public at large, does that mean outside the county?
Um, that could be one thing amongst others that it would mean. It, it would mean, I'm trying to think of another example other than police and fire. Let's say the library, the county library. If everyone gets to use the county library, whether you own property in the county or live in the county or not, that would not be, we couldn't put a parcel fee on to support the library. It's because it's tied to property ownership here that we can put it on as a, as a parcel charge or fee.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
I have a question on the fees. What about larger commercial, for example, the fairgrounds? They charge a larger fee for that. Would this, would this 218 trigger an increase on their fees that they pay?
I believe we would continue to have the equivalents that would be used to determine the fees associated with each, either a residential, if there's two residences on their property, or from a commercial standpoint, what the usage would be. So there would be an equivalent that would be implemented to determine that fee. Am I correct, Sarah?
That's correct. As mentioned, it's, the $150 is for improved residential parcels. It does, it, it changes based upon what kind of parcel and use we're talking about. And so long as the nexus study supported that same distinction, yes, it's going to be different for commercial uses or big versus a residential. And, and again, so long as we just can't exceed what's kind of attributable to that parcel as supported by the nexus study.
Okay. I, I just get concerned because if there's some of those costs that increase the overhead and the capacity to stay in business, so.
And, and then just to that point, Supervisor Follendorf, it would be within the discretion of the board. The board could, as a policy matter, decide to make the fee less than, so I'm, I'm just making this up, I'm pulling numbers, you know, out of the thin air. But let's just say that a nexus study showed that $500 per residential parcel would be supportable. That doesn't mean that that's what the board has to make the fee, it just can't exceed that.
Got it. Thank you. Daphne?
Except for, for Marita.
Well, to, to follow up, let's say it would be a higher cost for a commercial-developed property. We could say the residential is this price, and we can choose to make that commercial price lower in support of businesses being able to proceed on the overhead.
That would be within the board's discretion, yes. The, whatever the nexus study supports would be a, a ceiling, not a floor.
Okay. Marita? I'm sorry.
Would that apply to public agencies, to Forest Service, to Cal Fire, to, to public agencies that have properties?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Because the fairgrounds is state, is state property.
It is. I, I'm happy to look into that. I don't know the answer.
The other question I have is within this parcel fee that rules, a lot of impacts come from Airbnb's. So because of repetitiveness and mass COVID pickup, are there ways to, through the system, mitigate or work on those? Since there's a, you know, not the daily average trash, there's a more impactful.
If that parcel, if the, that parcel were just a, considered an improved residential parcel, I'm unaware of any distinction that we could make on the parcel fee front. If, it would, it would have to be considered some other type of use.
Okay.
Which I recognize as somewhat of a longer.
Like maybe something on the Airbnb application.
I'm unaware of any, I mean, at the end of the day, those are just, I, I recognize that there may be a more intensive waste generation, but those are improved residential parcels. So my, I, I am, but we can look into that.
Well, and correct me, maybe, Marita, might, wasn't there a reduction if it was a second home on some of these two?
We just changed that.
Yeah, so they seem to be, yeah, I, I, that's where my thought was going. I mean, there used to be something where you could play with.
The issue there is that, that was a reduction based on that, not an increase. So, but I'm happy to explore whether that could be somehow considered separate, but I'm, my instinct is that it would be treated like any other residential parcel.
Can I, if I could add something that, so maybe an option to look into is if we could add an equivalency. So as, as part of our, our equivalencies, when we determine a, a, a fee associated with it, if there is a way to include a, a rental unit that is being frequently rented out, I don't know what that would look like, but maybe that's an option to explore, to, you know, actually add an equivalent in there to capture that increased use on a Airbnb or something of that nature.
We would have to, that's something that we could theoretically explore as part of a nexus study.
That would be similar to an ADU, then. What difference would it be?
Yeah. I think, I think, I think there would be a more, for, for that to be defined, we would have to go back and pass another resolution or ordinance specifically to Airbnbs within Calaveras County, designating those as a commercial use on them. Am I correct?
Possibly. I, I think at the very least, it would require a nexus study that actually shows more intensive use from those parcels. Because again, we can't charge a particular parcel more than is attributable to a parcel of that type.
And if I can make a point, we're also collecting TOT if it's illegal Airbnb. So we're getting, we're getting our pound.
Thank you. Okay. Any other question, we'll let Jennifer go on? Okay.
Thank you, Sarah. So with the clarification on the Proposition 218 and what that would look like and the requirements, what I would like to do is look at the potential direction we would like to go with this. So an approach being we could have the comprehensive review that was discussed last fiscal year and have the fee study as two separate tasks. The benefits would, it would reduce lead time, and we would obtain recommendations to guide some really time-sensitive decisions that we have to make. We could also modify the original direction that we once had and to include the fee study that would substantiate a potential fee increase, as we've discussed. That would reduce the cost of having two studies. It would streamline the evaluation of the division and provide a complete set of recommendations that would provide best practices and a solid financial planning. So when I talk about the direction and the different approaches, I believe that we should look at this not from a time standpoint, and what I mean by that is, we do have, we are up against some really tight timeframes with airspace, cell development, et cetera. However, again, I want to reiterate that this document and what we're going to put into this is going to guide our directions, is going to bring us together in a, in a, in a collective direction of where we want to go and feel comfortable in moving in those directions. So again, I think it's, it's important that we, we evaluate what our goals are, and we, and like I said, we do have some, some really critical decisions to make, and the results of a fee study and our review is going to help guide those decisions. Going into cost and budget. So with discussion on the cost of a comprehensive review, you know, you're looking at $50,000 to $100,000. A comprehensive review with fee study, $100,000 to $200,000. So this range is directly dependent on the depth of the review. So when I have gone and vetted this out, as I explained earlier with the scope of our review, it is very in-depth. We have a lot of questions that we've asked. It's going to require a significant amount of time and energy on our consultant to review it. So my recommendation is to really establish a budget that we would like first. And within that budget, we would be able to identify the really critical areas that we need answers to. And that way, we can, we can really prioritize those questions being addressed and stay within that budget that we've determined. Again, it's all based on the, the depth of the review that we're looking for and, and how detailed we want to get. And again, it's, it's the time-consuming component for our, for the consultant that would be doing this review. So this goes to a little bit of a two-part question here. And first, like I said, what is, what's the direction we want to go? Do we want is, what's the direction we want to go? Do we want to have one review that includes a fee study that would potentially substantiate this fee, this fee increase like we've discussed? Do we want to have a review done so that we can kind of streamline our decision-making from a confidence standpoint and a collaborative effort? And again, what is the budget we're looking at that we would like to spend? Because that's going to really determine the depth of our review and how we want to approach this.
How does the board feel?
Jen, I have questions, I'll follow up with them later on, but the comprehensive review, we have a consultant chosen that will do this work for us? Are we doing this internally?
We have not chosen one. I have been in communication with several, trying to get an idea of what this looks like, again, cost-wise, timeframe-wise. So we have not chosen one because I think it's critical that we determine the direction we want to go with at first. And again, looking at the scope, we can get an estimate of what our review would look like. And at that point, if it's over budget, again, going back to the budget, we can whittle it down and say, you know, I don't think we need to review this component of the division or our solid waste management plan. And we can kind of bring it and streamline it, if you will, kind of condense what we want the review to be.
And what we're kind of, we being this board, is that who's going to make that? The Solid Waste Task Force? Or who's the we?
Well, I think that's a great question, honestly. I want to make sure that I'm answering the questions of your board that we have. I think that the Solid Waste Task Force could be instrumental in, in kind of guiding that as well. And I am more than happy to use my expertise within the division to ensure that we're answering those questions that I think are, are critical and moving forward productively.
One of the things that I think about on this review is, I want to be open-minded to all good idea, any good idea.
Absolutely.
And I think that oftentimes in county government, we get stuck in our lane and we don't see a lot of things that are around us because this is the way we've always done it.
That's right.
And while that is oftentimes the right way to do things, sometimes there are other ways to do things too. So I'd hope that when we talk comprehensively, we're talking truly comprehensively. Because I would like to, I mean, I'm, I'm blowing shit here as far as ideas go. So I'll pass it over to.
And I couldn't agree with you more. And that is, that is why I called it a comprehensive review, is because I think it's critical that we do challenge those historical perspectives and what we think may be a good idea, maybe not. But really being open to the results and the information that we receive and integrate them and be, and be okay with that. That would be my goal.
Dapa?
The, in the bylaws for the Solid Waste Task Force, the, the, there's a part in there that, that discusses that the proposals go before them and they give recommendations that they pass on to the board, which adds a step to the process, but addresses what you're talking to. And I completely agree with you, Mr. Garamendi. I mean, we've been stuck in a box for quite some time. Or, you know, with tunnel vision. And, and it's time we start thinking outside that box and opening our vision up so that we take in other recommendations. The budget, this comprehensive review, something we, because we take on the responsibilities of the board, no matter what happened in the past, should have been done a long time ago. I thank you for bringing this forward, Jennifer. This is a big-ticket item. And actually, on the budget in there, it kind of moonwalks us back a little bit because there's a time where we're putting money into a review that we already know we're on backwards when it comes, when it comes to the bottom line. But it's the reason we need it. So we can address it. That's the first step to doing the next step, which is the NEXUS study. Because this puts the full cost in place of what it takes to run and get to where we need to be to be sustainable. And the NEXUS study is the next step saying, hey, this is the only amount that, or that we can charge people to make that bottom line come out in the black instead of the red. Mr. Toffenelli?
Supervisor Stoppa, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing you say is you feel like the comprehensive review should be a precursor to the, the NEXUS study. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
In my opinion, they go hand in hand. Because you can't really do a NEXUS study without, without knowing what the true cost is, right?
Agree. Yes.
I, I do have a question. It has to do with the financing of what we have before us here. Given the information, Sarah, that you gave us just in the last couple slides before about how the money can be spent, and we are collecting this $150 parcel fee right now, would that be within the scope of using any of that money for these studies? Or do we have to use that money for some, for just running the landfill and the transfer stations? And we'd have to come out of general fund or somewhere else for this money?
I'm going to give you maybe a non-yes. So revenue derived from a property, property-related fee or charged can only be used for the purpose for which it's imposed. So you would have, I, I think that theoretically, you could build other things into, hey, this is why we're, this is what this fee is going to be imposed for. But it all depends on what, how it was established.
So can I ask this? And maybe, Jennifer, you know, when I bring a television or I bring a refrigerator or freezer out there to the landfill, I pay a separate fee?
Correct.
Are those fees kept separate from the $150?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yes. Those are gate fees.
Okay.
Yes. Additionally, there are, there's recycling revenue that is also separate that would be.
Recycled, yeah.
Correct. Yes. It would be outside of the, the $150 parcel fee.
Which brings me to another issue that I spoke about before at the last time. And it was brought up by Gambi when we were going over Gambi's contract. And the fact that we are not reaching our goals and anywhere close to the transportation, transfer stations on recycling, because it's just dumped in the container, into the crusher, and it goes in through and transferred out to the landfill. And if we're getting fees for recycling and reducing the amount in our landfill, I think part of this study needs to be on what we can do there to reduce the amount of everything going into it, getting, upping our recycling amounts at those transfer stations. Because just the number of the transportation, transfer stations and the amount that's going in is tremendous. And there could be some big-time money that we're just losing and putting in our landfill. So part of this, I think, needs to deal with that.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. And that would be from an operations standpoint in evaluating our transfer station operations to, to, to increase that, that diversion, if you will.
Correct.
Yeah.
Marita?
This is long, long overdue. I totally support a comprehensive review, including a fee study. I think the prioritization needs to be what you alluded to earlier, where your efficiencies are and where you could reduce costs. Of course, to me, an efficiency means you're going to reduce a cost. And capital equipment, you know, I mean, that's been, that's ongoing at almost every budget hearing. For me, I guess I'd like to see you and maybe the task force determine where are the critical areas of review, because you mentioned that a couple of times already. We have a short timeframe, critical areas. You know best what they are. They maybe should be in phases under a comprehensive review. So, you know, the return on investment of what we're spending to what we're going to get. And it could be a cumulative one. It could be 10 items where, where you could garner efficiency. But you're going to be the expert in what those are. And I think the sooner we get into it, the better. I appreciate counsel explaining Prop 218. I don't think that was our perception because it was on our property tax bill for many years. And the board, we wouldn't do anything because, oh my God, that's going to raise tax. And I'm an elected official and we can't raise tax. But Judgment Day is coming, or it's here, and it's been here off and on over the years. So I totally support what it is that you're proposing.
Thank you.
And, thank you.
So, thank you again, Jen. I thank you, Marita, for basically calling the questions so we could start figuring and giving you direction, which is what you're here for. The, I will, I'm going to weigh in on that I think we ought to do the review and then the tax, and then the fee study. I know that may add a little bit of time, but I'd like to see what the options are against what the budget is. So we could, so we can get an idea as to what the scale of the budget problem that we'd be solving. I think too many times, and not just an elected official, but as a taxpayer, we, if we do a fee study, we're going to build to what the budget is rather than maybe what we need. So I'd like to see what we need and what the ideas are, and then do the fee study. We've seen the budget come through a couple times and we're always generally confused by it. And so without that clarity as to the scale and type of the problem, I'd be very hesitant to spend another $100,000 to come up with a, a number which we know will not be less than what we have today. But I would like to sort of get my arms around the budget piece before we go out and enter into asking everybody to up the price. So there's, they've got two, two opinions.
Yeah.
We split each other's vote.
Yeah. And I'll respond to that. Just from the conversations I had with our consultants, we can approach it as one task with the idea of almost having it as two separate, if you will. So it's a one task, doing a full comprehensive review, a fee study involved. But you're, you will have the component of looking at the budgetary issues and looking at our costs. And then that fee study will be done at the same time to support those findings, if you will. So, so they, they really are a, it, it does help from a review standpoint, from the person performing the review, is to do it at one time. But I absolutely understand what you're saying is that it would be nice to first do a review to see where, where we sit and what we would be required, and, and then do the fee study. But I do want to reiterate that in my conversations with the consultants, and of course, they can have recommendations, but that is, you know, from a standpoint of streamlining it and having the most value come from a review, you, doing it at the same time is often an industry standard, if you will, of how the reviews are performed.
I understand that. My position stays.
Yep. Yeah.
Ben, you like, John?
One, one thing I do want to say is, we do know that the budget's short.
Yes.
You know, we aren't going to cross the finish line without some change. That said, the final goal's going to be elongated. That finish line's being pushed back. We do have some obligations with the state. Some of those thresholds need to be crossed as we move forward. And we need to take the budget we have and make sure we cross those thresholds so we meet with the state. From my perspective, we also need to take in some of those considerations outside the box that we haven't really talked about yet. And what can we do to elongate our, or get our budget to stretch to the point where we can get the landfill done and paid for before we're upside down? And, you know, we're, we're on a short runway. Where are we at with possibly being filled up on the landfill?
We have about two years.
About two years.
Mm-hmm. So again.
That's a lot of investment to happen within two years.
Is that two years on the whole landfill or two years on the cell?
The current cell we are in. Yes. So I think it's, just to clarify, a point of clarity, is this review can happen at the same time as we progress. So it wouldn't be something that would, you know, stall any progress.
No, we, we understand that.
You know, just, just, okay.
We understand that. But that's not the point. The point is, we go through this review, may take up two years, and then we have to go through, you know, or longer.
I.
And then, you know, it may be shorter. But, and then, we have to send it to Solid Waste Task Force, and then we bring it back to the board, and the board, the board debates these things. I mean, this all takes time. We're well into our second year. Before we start solving these money issues, that, we need to cross to get to that. So there has, I mean, we, I'll, I'll just be blunt. From my perspective as one, we may need to come up with some remedy to prolong our budget, which may be diversion at some time. Even more so, so that we can stretch that to the point where we can actually afford getting it done. I, there's other possibilities. I'm not saying that's the final decision of the board, but, you know, we have to take all those into consideration as we move forward.
I agree. And that is something we need to consider and look at, you know, what our timeframes are, for sure. I, I think that just, just to kind of, again, some points of clarity that you're saying Supervisor Stoppa, that we are looking about a, what I've been told from the consultants I have talked to, about a three-month lead time on this review, that they could perform it. And that's what consistently, I've, about five conversations with different consultants, and that's what, you know, what they're telling me. Of course, I understand that that could change. But I'm just letting you know, that is kind of the timeframe that they were looking at.
Yeah. No, and I, and I hear you. But let's say, okay, now you're going to go out and we say, go for it, Jen, right? Which, you know, I have a feeling we might do. But then we get to the point where you have to put it out for bid?
Potentially.
And then it comes back to the board, we make our decision. I mean, we're, we're always stacking over a month, two months before the three months. Then they go through it, then you got to bring it back, go through the whole process I'm talking about.
And again, potential of going out for bid, determining what the budget is that we're going to be looking at, would, you know, would then direct where we would be going with a, requiring the bid process. Also, going back to the task force, I do think that, looking at the bylaws being that they need to be reviewed annually and understanding what it is as far as what the task force is required by state law to do. And that is to assist in the development of the various elements of the solid waste management plan. So if we look at the bylaws that we have, that we have need to be reviewed and we do need to update, that can, we can determine what that role would be. But remembering what that task force state, that, coming from, from what they are required by law to do, I think that's important to keep at the forefront of our mind.
And just so everyone knows, while you certainly could choose to put it out to bid or solicit proposals, that's always an option. It's a services contract, you wouldn't necessarily have to.
Thank you.
I will say this, I agree with Ben and I agree with you, Jennifer, that we need to do both the review and the fee study at one time. So we cut down on the time. Otherwise, we're doing the one, then we're going to start, go out for a bid and do the other one. We don't have the time to do that. If we had, if we had the time, sure, I would agree with what Supervisor Garamendi is saying. But right now, I don't think we have the time. And even when we get these completed and we agree to it, property taxes are paid in April and December. So we'd have to wait till the next time it comes around to see any income from. any income from that, which could be another year.
Correct.
So the time is, is getting short and we need to start opening another cell and preparing to open it up. There's a lot of things to do before we even get to that point. So time is of the essence right now.
It is.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a couple of questions. One, going back to the fee study. In a comprehensive study with a fee, can, I know you can do them in 218 for water, but I wasn't sure about waste management. Can you do phases? Can you slowly get up to a certain dollar amount so it's not an initial shock to the payer? So say the first, the first fee wave is 175, then a, so we set on 215, I'm just throwing a number out. Can it be phased in over X amount of time? So the first one, you know, goes up to 175 and then the next one goes up to 185, you know, until you get to that 215. Is that allowed in this 218?
I can't think of any reason why it wouldn't be so long as it's supported by the NEXA study and doesn't exceed the-
The threshold.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Okay. Is that something that can be included in this fee study? Because I think we're going to be in for a rude awakening of how much that cost is and it might be more either feeding versus the initial.
Yes, and that is actually a question that I have in that scope in that proposal is what, what would be the best way to incrementally, you know, increase this so that, and how can we implement this recommendation and what is the best way to do that? So that is definitely a question I have to ask on that as well.
Okay. The other thing, you know, we'll talk, keep talking about timeline, are there ways that the board can support to do, you know, kind of tomorrow reevaluations of the division and support you so that way it's just that dollar, as Ben says? I mean, just in an internal analysis of ways you can cut those costs to help stretch this and be able to accomplish this?
Well, I think that we're moving forward. We have some, done some reclassifications and some adjustments on staffing. I think that there can be additional ways that we can support that as well. Right now, I think that you are supporting my, me by inviting me here to talk to you. So if we can continue to have this conversation and communicate and I can express to you what our current issues are and what, and, and receive direction, I think that is right now the best way that you can support me. And the, and the interest in this would be, I would appreciate, and that would be supportive for me.
Okay. Going to the scope of work, or the scope of the study, so now that the task force is full, how do other members of the community participate in giving the task force or you the feedback for the scope of what we may not understand or the reality out there?
The public is welcome to come to the meetings. They can join in a meeting. They can attend. And that would be my suggestion. Should you have any input or questions, you're welcome to come to the meetings that we, we would be holding.
Okay. And then at the end, who reviews the scope? Does it come back to the board? Can you remind me how that step works? So you work at it, you know, the task force have the investment, possible stakeholders, and then the scope comes to the board for a final review before we send it out for that RFP?
It depends on what process we decide to use. I mean, if we're talking a contract over $50,000, the contract itself obviously has to come to the board for approval and execution. But, I mean, if you, you could direct staff to bring the scope back prior to getting to that point, in theory.
I don't want to add more layers and delay. I just was trying to understand because this is complex and just making sure we all, all see it and it's transparent to what's going on outside and the stakeholders so they're aware of what we're trying to get with the dollar we can't afford right now.
Understood.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Oh, I do, sorry. One other question. Because the cell, we've got two years on this with the timeline, is there any opportunity to look at some of the hybrid, hybrid approaches to delay the influx of stuff into the landfill by doing maybe a temporary pilot program? I mean, can that to help you, because we're crunching on time, we're crunching on numbers, and it doesn't mean that that's going to be the set way, but maybe this gives us an opportunity, especially for you and your division, to see what really didn't work, what doesn't, you know, kind of that real life reality for that better decision-making down the line?
Yeah, I think that that's absolutely something I'm going to be looking into, knowing that with a two-year timeframe that we're looking at, I, I have been reassured by our consultants that we work with right now that we can, we could meet that two-year timeline should things, as far as funding, be in place, right? That would be the biggest question at this point. But as we move forward with our permitting, things are going in that direction. They do feel very confident with the space and we can utilize what we call the benches within the, the landfill cell right now, making, you know, more space. It would be hard, a little more difficult operational, but it is doable. So there is, there is confidence from their side that we have, you know, we definitely have talked about, but I, for my confidence, I would like to look at that Plan B. We're going to need to have that in place as we move forward. And as construction takes place, we need to know what our, what a potential diversion would look like, absolutely.
Okay. What is the success of a 218 here? Because my concern is we get, another concern is we get to this and then we get, the board get told we can't, we don't get the support for the 218. We've invested all this, we've gone to hell and dug the second cell, but we have no capacity to support it. How did that, how did that work with us in the end? To force the fees to go up or we just stuck with the same fees?
Yes, if, if we go through that process and if a majority protests are received, then yeah, the fee would remain, it could not be increased beyond what it is now.
The parcel fee, that is.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, the gate fee, we can address at the gate fee.
Right.
But I'm just trying, I'm, I want to talk it out because this is a, this is a big time crunch and just a lot of other things. We just need to be, have a way, you know, make sure you've got a good game plan so we can get this across the finish line. Okay.
That being said, and say that's the worst-case scenario, that we have too many protests exceed and we can't do a property tax fee. Then what I see as an alternative would be a fee at the gate. In addition to your home fee that you're paying, then you would have to pay a fee at the gate in order for us to maintain it because we have to come at the income to maintain it and, and not only close this cell, we have an added cost after that cell is closed to monitor it and, and keep it monitored while we go and start using the other cells. So there's costs associated with it that we have and so-
Right, and we, we do, yes, as you say, we do have other ways of recovering our costs. It's just, correct, the property-related charge that we have to go through that process for.
Jack, do you have another question?
I think as Ben said, we're planning out studying sessions, solid waste, solid waste, solid waste.
Yes.
I think we're going to have to continue with that mantra on a pretty regular basis and really appreciate that. So we could be partners here and help you get this, don't get stuck. So just so I understand, we've got two years left on the landfill. Your, our consultants tell us that we can build it within that time period, which is surprising, but I'll take your word on that. And, but we don't have the money in the bank yet to do that work.
You're correct.
So I think when we talk solid waste, solid waste, we'll throw in the budget component on the next update.
Absolutely.
Because I need to get my mind around that.
I, I couldn't agree with you more and that's why I want frequent visits. I think it's important that we try to kind of streamline our conversations so that we can have the most productivity and utilize our time wisely as we're here. So again, coming from, that's why I chose this to discuss, so that it really kind of gives us that foundation to move forward. So yes, we do need to have frequent conversations and I, I'm hoping I get invited back frequently so that we can move forward and talk about these, these challenges that we're facing. But for the purpose of today, I wanted to keep it streamlined to this, this review and a fee study and, and determine the direction we want to go with that.
Well, considering there are four votes here, I think we're doing, doing them together, I'll, I'll jump in on the winning team here, which I rarely do, but, okay.
I still need to ask for public comment. So is there any other questions or comments from the board? No, okay, so is there any public comment?
Dave May. Good morning. My name is Dave Vacarosa with Cal Waste Recovery. I just wanted to just speak to the process. With the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which we're not, I'm not on that committee, but we do look to that committee for direction. And in the last two years, you said you met on the 21st. I, I guess, I guess we did, but, you know, I, I just got off with the phone with Phil Jabashiani. He knows nothing about any of this meeting. We knew nothing about the meeting today. And if, in fact, the process is that you take this before the, the Solid Waste Committee. Why didn't the Solid Waste Committee meet before this meeting to have some input from the stakeholders? There's Yambi, there's the general public, there's myself, who are all key stakeholders in this, and we have virtually been held out of the process. No, no notices go out, we've heard nothing. So this is just another example of how the system really doesn't work. And I know you're here to fix it, but we're already, so we're already going around the, the stakeholders. And I think you need to fix that. I think meaning as a stakeholder to have input on what this comprehensive review really is about. We're affected, my customers are affected. The recycling money that comes from my customers goes back into, into subsidize this department when, in fact, that recycling money should go to enhance recycling, not to buy bulldozers. It's not what it's about. These people are committed to recycling and we turn around and bury garbage with their money. Doesn't make sense. So I hope you get a consultant that knows what you're talking about, can work quickly, solve this problem, but I think you need to stick with your protocol. You need to let the public know what's going on here. We are in a shroud. We see nothing. We have asked for information, we have to go to the, to the American Information Act or whatever it is to get our information. It's not transparent. It's not. It's very difficult to get any information from that department. Excuse me if I'm a little nervous, but I am. So that's my message. Jack has some things he wants to say, so I'll pass, please. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Jack Fiori, CEO at Cal Waste. I, I wanted to encourage a couple of things. The, I, I think the RFP process is important to this. I think the, the study that Jennifer has laid out, in my opinion, is, is comprehensive and it's going to take a thorough analysis to come up with the, to answer the questions that she's posed. I think they're good questions, but I think that choosing, choosing a consultant because they're the most available or they're the cheapest or any one of those other single, single choice options, I think would be, would be inappropriate. I think you need to read the proposal and look at their price and, and their, and their timing and, and choose wisely from that. I, I agree with, with the comment I heard that the, the documents should be vetted at the, at the solid waste task force level. I think that's a good idea. I think that while there's a lot of questions to be answered in Jennifer's PowerPoint, I'm not sure that those are necessarily all the questions that need to be asked, and the task force could help with that. I think you all know that we've, we've proposed another option of taking, for disposal of taking, taking tonnage out of the county. I, I think that that needs to be clearly stated in this. The point that I think Mr. Supervisor Toffenelli made about the recycling goals, I think those definitely need to be part of the study. So there isn't any question that at the end of the day, while you've got something that still doesn't achieve the, the objectives that the state has imposed upon you. And then, lastly, I guess, as a quick question, how are the solid waste task force members selected and, and how do you end up on the task force? I noticed that this morning when there were some committee members appointed, the task force was not part of that. I didn't, were they on agenda prior or how did they get there?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
It was the, the prior meeting we were at, we did appoint people to the solid waste task force. The people appointed to the solid waste task force are only people that come in and put in an application to be on said solid waste task force. And at that point, to also answer Dave's question prior, is we haven't had meetings because we haven't had a full quorum. And we had to go out and ask people, look, are you interested? Can you please put an application so we can start going through this process? And it's absolutely right, it's part of being transparent. As we move forward, we fully intend to have these meetings, bring in the stakeholders for public comment so that we can have these conversations and then bring it back to the board. All in all, the solid waste task force does hear things, they may put recommendations, but when it comes down to it, the board here has the final say.
Understood.
And that, and that's, that's the way it is.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Hey.
You're probably going to have me sit down and I'm okay with that, but this is the only opportunity I have this conversation. I have Dr. Highway. I do it in Valley Springs. If you go home, three of you on the board up here, or, and Sarah, you live in Valley Springs, we are the artery to the landfill. I can't keep up. It's, it's unbelievable the amount of trash on the road. So all I'm asking, I've asked for, I just went and came back from Yosemite Fire and up in that area there, there's signs to do not litter, there's other avenues to keep it off the road. My firefighters are busy right now. They don't like me when I talk about this and adopt the highway. Gary, you have adopted highway with the Rotary. It is a monumental nightmare and coming into our community because we have the landfill all the way out to Milton. I've talked to Jennifer about the Cal Waste trucks. I'm sorry, but I cover 165 square miles. I see where all the trash comes from. And it comes off the, the Cal Waste trucks, it comes off people, you know, public, but when it comes down to picking up the trash, me, your fire chief, I'm out there picking up the trash, you'll see me. And I, I can't keep up. Gary, you do it. I can't keep up. It's that bad right now. So all I'm asking you, when you do this study, if I'm a taxpayer and you're going to ask me to pay more, I'll pay more. Can you add $15 to everybody so that we can have somebody pay him or come up with, at least, and I've asked about, I've gone all the way, followed the truck all the way to the landfill, I said, why is that truck not covered? Why is there not a cover on there? And I've been told by Ben and other people, we can't do that. The system's broken with that. So I'm just tired and when I ask the people that are at, shake your head, Marita, have you been there?
We have signs that say, tarp your load.
One sign, Marita.
No. I can't address your area. In my area, we have several signs that say, tarp your-
We don't have it down in mine, the landfill's down there. And I'm not, I'm passionate, I'm trying, because I, I want it to look better, but when I went down and talked to the gals and checked them in, they go, I go, why is it not covered? And they said, we can't turn them around. There's, there's no fine, there's no fee. So anyways, it's with your study, I'm just asking, just look at that part, help us out because my firefighters ready to go, we're done, no more. But right now, if you go home today, you will see the orange bags on the side of the road. My frustration, why isn't Caltrans helping out? Why, why aren't they cleaning up the highway? Why is it just the local citizens doing it? You know, so anyways, it's just, it's a mess.
I did talk to Mr. DiBasilio to reach out to Rich. I'm answering a little bit. I did, Rick did reach out to Highway Patrol, they've been actually doing a few- I did, Rick did reach out to Highway Patrol, they've been actually doing a few more patrols.
Awesome.
Because, to get that on there, I have discussed with Jennifer, actually, there's other counties that do an additional fee to people that show up without tarps on it. So that is something we're actually going to look into, so that, you know, if they show up, you drove down here without a tarp, you have to pay this much more for your load when you come in the door. And also, I did get the prisoners out there, not only to clear the grass on both sides of the road for that area where we had like multiple fires last year. It didn't take care of the highway, I understand that, sir, but we did pick up the trash at least once this year for you.
And again, my two senses, it's an issue, as a taxpayer, I'm going to pay more to make it look nice, so when members come up to visit our community, it isn't like, wow, look at the trash on the side of the road. So if we're going to pay, I want to pay more for that.
Yes.
I just want to add one thing. Marina picks up trash too. As a matter of fact, she was out there a couple of weeks ago. So she is another person that picks up trash on the highway. Thank you, Marina.
I'd also like to add that some of our employees actually come to work early and pick up on the way to the job, because they know that that is an issue and none of us like looking at it. So some people actually volunteer their time on the way to work to pick up trash, bring it out to the landfill, prior to even arriving to their scheduled work time. So there is efforts, there's awareness for it, of it, definitely.
And I've been picking up on the highways with Rotary for a long time, decade and a half at least, all the time that we picked up money. I mean, we picked up trash. I never found any money. We found all kinds of stuff, but there was never any money. So I'm still looking for it.
Is there any other public comment? Are there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. With that, if there's anything else you want to add, thank you for the presentation. I think you've gotten your direction from the board. It's informational, not action.
I know, but we, general direction, there's multiple things here. I just would like to say real quick with the Solid Waste Task Force, you know, I think Gary might have a proposition, there's one more position to fill for recycling. So we, it would be good to fill that position on the task force, see if we can get anybody to put in applications for it as we move forward, but we do have a quorum now. There I go again. I'll stop with that.
If I could add one more thing, do you mind? I would just like to reiterate that it is the intent, and we are highly motivated to get the task force going again, because I think there's incredible value to it when it's used properly. So from that standpoint, I look forward to having these meetings to include our collaborators, and so that we are having that open line of communication. I have reached out to them individually to provide my direct cellphone, and I'm available to answer any questions at any time, because that is my ultimate goal, is to bridge that communication even more than, you know, as it's kind of suffered in the past, I should say. So that is the goal, and I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you.
I apologize, we do have a public comment. They raised their hand.
Okay.
It's Debbie Ponte. Yes, go ahead, Debbie.
Good morning, members of the board. This is Debbie Ponte, and I find the presentation interesting today, and I have a couple of questions on this comprehensive review that is being proposed. So I may have missed it, but is there a timeframe for which this proposal will be reviewed by the Solid Waste Task Force before it goes out for any kind of bidding process? And if so, is there a timeframe for this comprehensive review to begin and to end?
Can I answer?
Those are two of my questions on that particular.
Jennifer?
Yes. Those timeframes have not been established as of right now, but as we've indicated, we're looking to expedite this review process and move forward with it.
So once it's ready to go out, who does it go out to, to be bid on? What's the process there for bidding?
That would be a determination based, would you like to?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just saying, so as mentioned previously, it doesn't have to be bid on, it's a services contract, we certainly can solicit, we basically can design the process to look like whatever we want it to look like. We can call people up who are already aware of and let them know, we can post, you know, that we've got this project that we are looking to contract for. The county has a lot of flexibility when it comes to services contracts.
Is there a certain amount for that? Like 50 grand and over, or under 50, that staff has a guideline on?
No, in general, the county can solicit services contracts kind of however it sees fit.
But it's unlimited?
Yes, it doesn't matter, the dollar amount doesn't matter. Contracts over $50,000 of any kind do have to come to the board for approval of the actual contract itself.
So it was made mention on this particular comprehensive review that there's been some discussions with folks in the industry, so I'm assuming the folks in the industry are potential people who will perform this comprehensive review?
Debbie?
Yes.
During public comment, can we put all the questions together in the beginning and then we can reply? This isn't to be a back and forth?
It's actually not even necessarily reply, if you can just make your public comments and then.
But that understood. We appreciate you calling in. A lot of this was addressed earlier in the meeting. If you didn't see the beginning of it, it will be in the recording, so the answers are there already.
All right, I have no further comment. Thank you.
Are there any more?
There is no further public comment, online public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Well, yeah. Okay, do you have the overall direction based off of each of the slides that we went through, or do we need to go through and get some clarity for you?
I always like to have clarity on the direction. What I'm hearing is that your board would like me to move forward with the comprehensive review, including a fee study that would substantiate a potential Prop 218 increase. I think the only question that resides is the budget that we would like to spend on this review, that will really determine the questions and the depth of the review that we get to perform. So I think that's critical, so that we are staying within what your board would like to see.
And then now with today, with finalizing this task force, you will be addressing the task force and the bylaws and everything going forward.
We will have to review the bylaws, yes, we will.
I just want clarity that there has not been any quorum, so that's going to be, now that we have quorum, you're also going to be working on that.
Correct.
Okay.
You're looking for a dollar amount that you can spend. You have some dollar amounts here in front of us for both the comprehensive review and the fee study, you had between $100 and $200,000.
That is correct.
So to give a direction, I'm okay with that, as long as you don't exceed that.
If it exceeds, you think, come back to the, we're going to have to have a different conversation and come back to the board.
Yeah, just got to come back to the board, but this is in your budget already, you're not asking for additional dollars, are you?
I am, I'm going to have to come back to you and ask for a, to allocate for this, and that was going to be my next topic, is that I think there should be awareness, if this is the direction that is given. It was not put into this year's budget, and I will have to bring it back to make that transfer to allocate for this project.
Yes, she has to go get some fees and bring it back to, because this is just a study session here, it's not.
That is, that is correct.
But, you know, I'm just giving her direction. My direction is if you bring it back, I don't want to exceed what's in front of us.
Understood.
And I think we were aware with some of these workshops, I don't think this is going to be the only one, there's going to be some others, and hopefully we can get them before the final, we can make that decision, but there may be some workshops with staff's work that may come after that we may have addressed in mid-year. But I think we, I think that was where we were trying to get the timeline at the last meeting with the workshop, to make sure we can crunch and feel more pressure for them to get it to us for final budget, unfortunately, so.
Public hearing is closed, I didn't hear a public hearing.
Yeah.
I don't see where we have our input yet, though. As the Solid Waste Task Force to determine what this is about. It's a process, I understand.
Okay, so if there's any more than this amount, yeah, we're going to, either way, you have to come back to the board.
Absolutely. But just for a preliminary guidance and direction here, what I'm hearing is move forward with the comprehensive review, with the fee study, not to exceed the $200,000, and to expect that I come back to allocate for this project.
And what is the timeframe with that to come back? Are we doing that at markers? Would that dollar amount be coming back at another meeting, or? And I'm just asking because of the timeline, we're on a timeline crunch.
Definitely. If we are looking to push it forward before final budget in September, then yes, it would need to come back for the board in order to increase the appropriations in our budget.
Okay. Okay. Any other, anything else we need to answer for you? Or anything else board need to get clarity before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay, you're good?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Madam Chair, can we take like a five-minute break, please?
Yes, we will take a five-minute break.
The interpreter's room needed.
The next item is item 16. This time I'll allow the clerk to read out the item.
Item 16, informational item, administrative office, receive an informational report from administrative administration regarding fiscal year 2022 through 23 capital improvement projects.
Markers, you're up. You're in the hot seat today.
All right. Perfect, all right. Well, good morning, board. Today I'm here to speak about the fiscal year 2022-23 capital improvement projects and provide an update on the projects we have going for this year. So we are going to start real quick with the background on CIPs, the capital improvement projects we have today or this year, as well as a potential future project we have in the works. So the background, so CIPs are construction or major repair projects of county buildings and facilities. They include community centers or IWM. They also include informational technology, so IT projects. These projects do not include, or this presentation does not include public work CIPs, so we will not speak about any county roads or bridges in this update. So the list of CIPs was adopted on June 21st, 2022, for the fiscal year 2223 year. So this year we have 16 CIPs that were approved, many of those were rolled over from the previous year, and so I'm going to touch on those. And for the purpose of this presentation, I have categorized them into five categories. So the first being equipment replacement and upgrades, followed by remodels and cabling, software projects, landfill CIPs, and large construction projects. So the equipment replacement and upgrades, the main data center, so for the main data center, we are looking at replacing equipment, including county blade servers as well as a three-par storage device. This item was ordered on July 1st. We are anticipating from the vendor for it to take about nine months to come in due to supply issues. So as of right now, this item has been ordered, but we are anticipating it to arrive in April, and that's when we'll actually work on the project, and we are anticipating for the project to be completed this year. Very similar to the main data center, the network equipment refresh is in the same boat. We also ordered that product on July 1st. This includes the county core switch, the county edge router replacement. It also is about nine months out, so we too are looking at April for this job, for the items to come in and the work on the project, and then close it out shortly after there. Another upgrade we have is the Archives Network connectivity. So currently, our Archives building is not on the county network. It was put in the budget to put this building on the county network. We have not moved forward on this project at this moment. I am currently evaluating whether we move forward with putting that single building on the county network, or look at much bigger projects which would take care of all the buildings in that area. So for example, we are looking at the Colombo Building, the Hubbard E Building, the Archives Network, or the Archives Building. What do I mean by that? So we have $30,000 budgeted specifically for Archives to take care of one building. We would have to purchase, or we would have to get a Comcast line that we pay monthly on. The alternative is if we, and we have an estimate currently right now, for $70,000, we can put a microwave tower on the Hubbard E Building, which could hook into Colombo, it could also hook into the Archives Building, and it can put all of those buildings on the county network without having, without needing to purchase these separate Comcast accounts. So we are, I've been working with IT, we're exploring the ideas, weighing out, is it beneficial just to move forward with Archives, put them on the county network, or should we be looking at as a whole? So as those discussions are happening now, and of course, if we decide to move forward with the more expensive one, we will have to return to the board in order to increase appropriations and update the CIP list. So that's the Archives Network project. So last year, the next one on the list, the jail cameras and detention controls, we were hoping to finish that last year, it did not, we did not complete the project. We do have about $11,000 in outstanding bills that are still coming in. Once we receive those bills, we will be issuing payment and closing out that project. The final one on this list is the jail and sheriff's office building HVAC mechanical system upgrade. This project had some delays in that we are currently working with county council to either go out for a formal bid process or an informal bid process in order to have this upgrade done. It was initially submitted to us as a, as maintenance, but after reviewing the contract, it is more of an upgrade, and therefore we had to switch from moving forward with the contract to a bid process, and that's what we're currently working on. Yes.
Well, if it's an upgrade, then are we saying that the equipment the contractor put up there for the facility when it was built was inadequate?
So the current construction of the HVAC system is in need of an upgrade. It is, to continue with what we have right now, it will eventually fail. And so we are, we need to upgrade it, they're changing out parts and they're doing construction, or we'll need to do construction on it. So we've received a quote, we have those quotes right now. Initially, it was presented to us as a maintenance contract, as we reviewed the contract, it didn't look like maintenance, it appeared to be more of an upgrade, and so that's why we are now looking at a bid process.
This is following up on, there was some emergency work that was done, and now this is kind of finishing. is kind of finishing out the rest of that project.
Okay.
We do have several remodels on the CIP list. We have the assessor's office remodel. The assessor's is in two separate buildings, close to each other. They are in what we refer to as the assessor's annex, and then they also have their main building. We started this project last year, we reached out to our contractors, and we now have the annex portion. We have found a vendor, they are looking to remodel, we're just working on a date for them to come out and start that process. This, this project, we anticipate to take several months as we're doing it in two phases. First is doing the annex, and then second one, we're going to be focusing on the assessor's main building. The auditor's office remodel, this one, we have received quotes from the auditor during the budget process, she submitted those to us. We are working on contacting the contractor in order to start this process, but we have not started the auditor office remodel at this time.
Sorry, but I have another question.
Absolutely.
Does, does that remodel that she proposed to you and showed you, does that eliminate the hallway going back between Public Works and her office and making office space?
Correct, so right now the auditor is also in what appears to be two areas, and it's eliminating the wall in between the two spaces to make it one big space.
Marcus, Gary gets to jump in, I want to jump in too.
Absolutely.
The assessor's office, with all due respect to our current assessor, who's doing a fine job for the rest of the year, are we coordinating with, there'll be a new assessor coming on, are we coordinating, make sure that they have the same plans? I don't want the new assessor to come in and not like the way things are.
Yes, no, I agree, we, the majority of the contact we have has been with the assessor. I did send a meeting as well with the incoming assessor, and while that changeover will happen in December, we have been moving primarily off the direction of the current assessor, also touching base with the incoming assessor.
I'm sure they want to work well together in this transitionary period, so it'd be great if they were on the same page.
Yeah, of course they have different visions, but we're doing the best to accommodate.
Thank you.
The, the networking associated remodels, this is cabling. It is listed as a separate item, but it also, it addresses the assessors and the auditors when we do the remodels, this is to cable the buildings as well. Also, another remodel we have on here is the railroad flat community school slash community center. We received a grant, Prop 68 grant, in the amount of $300,000. We are, we've currently worked with an architect, he's on standby to, just waiting our direction to give the go-ahead in order to start designing the plans for, to update the kitchen over there. The project also needs a new roof. We have brought out a roofer who has looked at the project to provide a scope of what needs to be done. So we are moving full force on the railroad flat school, making sure we meet all the requirements of Prop 68 in the process.
Sorry, but on, on that project, if it needs a roof, has it been leaking? And is there interior damage inside the walls and other things that need to be looked at? If we're going to do this project, we want to make sure it's safe for people to go in there with no mold or, or anything like that, so that's part of the project?
It, it is part of the project, so we, when we brought the roofer out, we walked the roof, I am not aware of any visible puddles or leaking on the inside, however, when we brought the roofer out and we walked the roof, and he brought me up there, and he showed me the areas of the roof where there's no underlayment, so you could see the, the sub roofing, and you could see that it's already starting to rot out, so he identified all of those areas, and it was very evident that the roof does need to be replaced.
I just want to make sure we have a safe building.
Software project, this one has been on the CIP list for some time now. We, we secured a new software program called TrackIt through the building department. There was several delays that were finally resolved this last week. We received the final invoice, and I received the go-ahead from the building department to pay the invoice and close out this project. So as of Friday, this project is now closed out, and it can come off of our list. Landfill CIPs, we have two CIPs out for the landfill. We have the Rock Creek landfill siding repair. Essentially, one of the buildings is damaged, and we need to replace it. We haven't started that project in discussions with our IWM department head. She is anticipating this job to be done sometime in October. The Rock Creek Phase 3 design, this one is wrapping up, and we anticipate after speaking with her, about mid-August for this one to wrap up and close out as well. And that brings us to our large construction projects. We have three, we have a government center electrical upgrade. This project was started a few years ago. We received a, we were working with ASAI and HCS engineering. So basically, once the jail was taken down, it was discovered there's a transformer that's buried over there, so in order, before we move on to a DA building, which has been identified to build over there, we will need to take care of that issue, as well as our electrical system is outdated and just needs to be upgraded and replaced. So in order to do all of that, to move forward with the DA building, we have to address the electrical upgrade. Back in 2019, this project was started, and for various reasons, it hasn't been completed, so we picked it back up July 1st of this year. We've reached out to HCS and ASAI, who has already completed Phase 1 of this project. We have a meeting this Friday to begin talking about Phase 2 and how to move this forward so we can move on to the much, the other project on here, which is the DA building. And then the Animal Services Building, this is.
Marcus, could you go back to the DA building and tell us a little bit more about where we are with that one?
Yes, the DA building, we haven't moved forward on the DA building. Outside of, we have allocated money in the budget for it, we are focusing on the government central, center electrical upgrade before we move on to the DA building. Right now, I, we can work towards looking at plans, but we haven't started moving forward with the DA building at this moment. We have allocated ARPA funding along with, there is a judiciary fund, a construction fund, that we have allocated toward this building that's in the budget for this year.
So you say we're focused on the electrical upgrades, we can't, do these concurrently?
We, we could, we could focus on the design aspect of it, so long as we're not doing any construction until this is taken care of, so. Correct, yes, so.
Apologize, Susan, we do have a ways before we break dirt, so it seemed like we could walk and chew gum on something like that.
Definitely, definitely, so. Animal Services Building, we have, with the Animal Services Building, we have a CEQA document that we're currently going through the mitigation issues with it. We have identified several, a biologist, an arborist, a geologist, and an archaeologist that we're working with to mitigate those issues. Yesterday, we walked, I walked with the department head of Animal Services, the area to look at the proposed area of where we want to focus all of our mitigation efforts. This Thursday, the department head, Lisa Medina, will be walking with Public Works to mark off the 6.93 acres, just to make sure we're within the area we need to. So as of right now, we are working on those contracts and the scope of work for those individuals so that we can start those efforts towards the mitigation efforts.
How are we doing on design? And I was understanding that we did CEQA when they did the jail, I wasn't here, but.
It wasn't, so the, if we're talking about for the Animal Services Building, we, when the board dedicated that land and, you know, picked kind of the space, they did adopt, the board adopted an environmental document, a mitigated neg-dec-claration, you're correct, that was in 2014. But what that mitigated neg-dec requires is that we do all of this monitoring and mitigation when we actually build, so that's what.
So the CEQA is good, we just have the requirements?
We may need to, to the extent the project, you know, is not, does not look exactly like it did when envisioned in 2014, we'll likely need to do an addendum, but no, we're not starting at square one, we're implementing what was done then.
And how are we doing on getting some design and some numbers in front of us?
And so prior to me coming to this department, there was a visit to other animal shelters to look at their design. We do have blueprints, we requested blueprints from, I believe it was the Tracy, the City of Tracy Animal Shelter, so we have those blueprints. In terms of design, we haven't started the design for our specific building yet.
Okay, because I remember back in, back in the day when I was on the planning committee, capital committee with Gary, we, there were some sketches that were put together and some preliminary, is that a spot we're starting, or we're working from basically blank page at this point?
Right, and I've seen those sketches very preliminary, nothing official, we, so we are essentially starting from the beginning of the design process at this moment. We have, we have been looking at other counties, other jurisdictions, to see which architects they have used, but we haven't selected one to move forward with at this time.
One of my concerns was in the budget this year, and I know it was a placeholder with that budget number, but I think it was, we set aside $9 million. That money, I would like to see a budget for this building, not $9 million, significantly less, because we also have the DA building. And I, I'm always concerned when you start with the budget number that you build to the budget rather than perhaps what you need. So I would like to, as we go to this point, that we plan what we actually need, maybe not everything we want, and find the budget so we could actually look at that, because otherwise the architect's going to go, oh, $9 million, I'm going to town, and that's, that's no good.
Definitely, and, and the $9 million, we are not requesting to use it all for the animal shelter.
No.
We have it split out between the government center electrical upgrade, the DA building, and the Animal Services Building.
When you look at these, these big projects, which are really big, and the government center electrical upgrade, I'm not sure the size of that outfit, but will we come back shortly and say, okay, here's our general budgets that we need for these capital upgrades, not just, you know, because the only one that we've got funded on the budget is the animal shelter, and that's where we're putting all the money. So we want to spread them out across these projects.
As it should be.
Not as, but what we need, maybe not what we want.
Understood. So that is all 16 projects that we currently have in this year. Again, many of them rolled over, and we are anticipating to finish most of them this year, with the exception of maybe the large projects. We should have most of them closed out by the end of the year. We are also exploring, just to speak about a future project, we are exploring a grant opportunity for a behavioral health building. This building, if, it is a competitive grant. If we do receive the grant, if we're successful in obtaining the grant, this will allow us to build a behavioral building in the current location and where they're located, but it would also allow us to get rid of the leases we have off-site with behavioral health. So for example, we have a couple of leases down by the Pizza Factory, we would be able to bring those employees on campus into a centralized behavioral health building. And so that addresses the behavioral, that's the behavioral health. Again, it is a competitive process, there's no guarantee that we will receive the grant, but that is something we are looking into at this time.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I mean, yeah, Marcus, you and I have talked about this for years, so you know the questions coming. We have talked many times about Health and Human Services, our lease over in St. Charles, possibility of bringing in a third-party builder so we could actually fund it. Health and Human Services is literally the Nordstrom's of any mall that you might put together, and since we are our campus. And so, has there been any movement in thinking about how we might be able to leverage those leases into building something on our campus for, for Health and Human Services?
Specifically for Health and Human Services, no, there hasn't been any more movement. The thought on this, with this grant, this grant is essentially would cover 90% of the building costs, and that's why we couldn't pass up on this, we wanted to move forward, see if we're able to be successful in, in getting this grant. The thought is, if, if we were successful, we could also look at the property next to Behavioral Health for a future site for Health and Human Services, or for the Human Services Building to put over there so they're all on the same location. Again, this is all dependent on us being successful in getting this grant. If not, we could look at a much larger building that encompasses everybody, but there hasn't been any more movement towards the Human Services Building.
Just as a single board member, I would like to see some fleshing out of that, because the lease is a five-year lease over in St. Charles, and so if we're going to, you know, that's how, that's our timeframe, if we're going to do something different. And so I would like to see some more movement on that, to see what we actually can do. I know you've run the numbers before, you know, other places have done this, Mariposa did it not so long ago, UC campuses do it all the time, and they get things built quicker than perhaps we could do on our own. And since Health and Human Services can't pay us back for a bond that we might issue, it's a great vehicle to go. So I guess my next question's, you know, we had a, we had a commit, I know this is a third rail, but maybe it keeps things on track. We had a committee put together at one point to ad hoc, to keep these capital improvement projects moving. It doesn't seem like a lot, there's been a lot of change, so it may get a grain of salt, but I do want to see these things done. So I don't know what it takes from this board to help that happen. Perhaps there's some insights on the board, or you have some suggestions?
Definitely, this is a list of 16 CIPs for this fiscal year. We anticipate, and our goal is to have 13 of the 16 done, with the large projects being the ones that may carry over into next year. That is the expectation of our office, that's what we are pushing for. It is not, again, it is not that we want these large construction projects, I'm just trying to be realistic.
They take years.
When we're talking buildings, it, it could take some time. What, what we need in our office is just support, continue, we're moving forward. I, I feel personally that as of late, we've been making a lot of progress on the projects from last year that have rolled over into this year, and so I anticipate starting to see several of them start to close out here in the near future, on the ones that are rolling over.
That, that's great. I appreciate checking those boxes and getting them done, I just want to find out from our board how, what we can do to move along. These are big-ticket items, and sometimes you've got a lot of other stuff going on too, that we understand.
And so, and that's the end of the update I have, is there any other questions?
Gay?
Well, to Jack's point, Marcus, we had $660,000 last year in the animal shelter budget, we didn't spend a dime of it. It just sat there. We did all this walking around and looking at these other buildings and everything else, but we didn't hire an architect or a designer to design us something. So I, I think the main focus right now is get to that point, and we have something in hand that we, we can get some cost estimates on, and I'm with Jack, we don't need to build this $9 million facility, because I don't think that's what we need. But I, I think we need to do, move forward on that. I don't have another year go by and have this budget sitting there and nothing spent out of it. I think if the money's there, you have the board's approval to move forward on it, let's move forward on it, and also the DA. You have money in that also that sat there. I know we had some negotiations with the courts for about a million, two, or whatever it was, and that's settled now, we have an MOU with them, that money's in hand. I, I think we need to move forward, we need to go, we need to get some design done and cost estimates and, and moving forward. The one other issue that I want to make you aware of, and I made Krista aware of it, that PG&E is just through CPPA or Calvary's Public Power Authority, to which we get our power, and we have a meeting tomorrow, but there's been a settlement with PG&E, there was a lawsuit filed, and part of the settlement with that was that PG&E is now only going to deliver full power to a pole, and it's going to be up to the user to bring the power down and go through all the boxes to get down to where the service level is. to get down to where the service level is. So that needs to be, and I'll, I'll know more tomorrow, part of our estimates when we make aware of what's going on with the DA and the redoing of the electrical that you're talking about out there. That could come into that play, so it could cost a lot more, along with the animal shelter. So we just need to be aware of that. What those costs are, I have no idea, but PG&E is very adamant, and part of the case that was settled was that they just bring full power, whatever it is, if it's 880, 660, 440, whatever, to that pole. It's up to you to get it down to what you need for your building. They'll no longer provide that service.
So they own the, they own the pole or JPA? They own the transformer?
That's, that's their settlement. They no longer just run that power to that pole. And that's...
And the public puts up the transformer?
Yeah. Puts up whatever needs to be done. They pay a contractor to do whatever needs to be done to get it down to the voltage you need. That was a settlement, from my understanding. I'll know more tomorrow, but that's what we discussed at our, our last meeting, is what PG&E's settlement was. They don't want to be reliable for anything other than the full power to the pole. It's up to you after that.
I've heard a couple places having to do that, Marita. It's been, when they have PG&E come out.
Well, they always did before, but they're not now.
I mean, the customer paid, but it's their transformer. It's not going to be their transformer anymore?
No. They don't want the responsibility.
But that's a service.
I'll, I'll know more tomorrow, but I believe that's what it's going to end up being, and that's going to be an added cost to all these projects.
Jack?
I think that, I would like to, not now and future, and I know I'm picking at a scab here, I apologize, but we have to get things done. We ought to consider the ad hoc, brought committee again.
Keep it?
To keep things going. And I know it's sensitive, but, you know, what's measured is done, and that kept CIPs from center. Maybe not today, but consider it, Marcos.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for bringing the update to us and keeping us apprised of what's going on. And yeah, I think it, it's a good reminder of where we're at and where we need to go and where, like Jack said, you know, hope, whatever we need to do to help push this along. I think we're all very anxious, and even if there's a concrete grab out there, I think people start getting excited and feel like we've accomplished something. So anyway, it's a lot of work. You guys have been working really hard to catch up, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And there's nothing else from the board? Marita, I do see your light on, so before I go to public comment, I just want to make sure I didn't miss you. Okay. Public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Perfect. And do you have anything else, Marcos, that you need from us?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to items, the last item for the day before we go into a closed session. Supervisor announcements. I'll start to my left with Marita.
Nothing to report.
Jack?
I'll be going to the Calvary-Sigefied School District Board meeting tonight to discuss railroad flat elementary, transition to community center, and I continually thank my fellow board members for their support.
Okay.
Nothing to report, other than we had a LAFCO meeting last night, and I guess I am going to be possibly on the ballot to be on CalAFCO.
Oh, yay.
We'll see.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Marita. Marita's my campaign manager.
Supervisor, stop there.
Thank you, the board, for writing the surf letter of support today, or supporting the letter of support. We continue to do the updates moving forward with Sierra Business Council. We've been through three meetings, and they're continuing regularly. Also, Ms. Galino got in last Friday, the, I forget the acronym for it, but the broadband application for, for another grant. That's, you know, she worked hard on it. She put that in with Central Sierra Economic Development District. There's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of possibilities as we move forward. I appreciate Mr. Garamendi's work with RCRC and working with all the other collaborators. And I do look forward to some success as we move forward in the future. Thank you.
And I don't have anything to report at this time. With that, we are closed and convene in the closed session. Thank you.